...for a little night and we came to some. So, when you go there, you can get a piece of a lot of cheese and star it out so I'm more in the middle of it. I said, I'm sorry, like, uh, well, that sounds easy to do that. Anyway, so I guess I suppose we all can do it. So, plus, uh, and, uh, probably it's like had a lot of them, which you would say, oh, if I have her come to this. But anyway, uh, we're in for a treat. Uh, Dr. Sattler has been here. I, you know, Mewra sounds like Dustin or more than him, but he's been here Mewra times and he's been here several times in years past. We love you every time you've been here. Uh, he's our anchor most times and did a great job. He did something that no other anchor could ever do. You stayed with us even today that we loaded home, man, and it's coming into the yard.
Yeah, yeah, they wanted me to kinda shepherd that morning through.
And, and then in that night, you know, we had to get together in Church Fellowship Home and you were there for that. And I'll never forget that, that you really cared for us and getting us off on a good start. Uh, and many things, and one other thing, he, you know, and he's got credentials. A mile high. He's been to the big schools. He's, uh, he's taught in the big places in Whalen, every one of them. You're, oh, go ahead, oh, that's a hard name of what you are now. But, uh, today he is, uh, the, uh... Well, why are you, well, you serve as the Director of Church and Denominational Relations. Denominational relations has gotta be a tough subject. But anyway, I know you could handle that very, very well. One little thing, I told myself, I know some things about him next. After my life gave a die and everything will, uh, time had passed and everything, Tommy and I were becoming, uh, more friendly. And I saw Dr. Sattler in United Supermarket. And we were talking and I think he just had a new grand baby or something, so I could personally...
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
And we were talking and I told him, I says, you know, I know you crazy as I can be, but I know this woman, but I really, really like a lot of... And I think I don't ask her to murder. And you put over there what you told me, but I felt you too. Well, hey, slow down. He said, you know, my mom is with her, and my mom married again twice, and I love both of my stepfathers. I don't know if you've ever told me that or not.
I do, I remember that comment, but...
So, Dr. Sattler, you, you look back to me several different ways over the years. It's so good to have you here this morning. Let me pray and then we'll turn it over to you for the rest of the day. Our loving Father, we thank you so much for the, the beauty of the day. Being classic, early February, cold, but not unpleasant unless you feel that would help. Thank you, Father, for each person that's here, for those that will come in a little bit later. Thank you especially for Dr. Sattler and for all that he means to the, to the work, teaching the gospel of Jesus Christ to all those in our area. For those young preacher men that he's taught and for the others that are lay workers. Pray you bless him and his family at this service today. Give him the strength, stamina, and wisdom in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Well, it is very comfortable being here. Uh, that's been a while since, uh, that interim. That was before Matt Bear. So, that's a little way back. And, uh, but ever since then, uh, spending those months here, it was really a good time for us. Jimmy, I, Jimmy's sick too. Sickness is going around. He's not gonna be able to be in here all morning and after afternoon, so he's not gonna be with us. Uh, we both were talking this week about the different people that we met here and some of the good times that we had. We have a lot of places that we can reminisce about, apart from certain ones. Remember, and I remember when y'all came over to College Heights to listen to, uh, Presbyterian Pastor a few years ago. Was that, I don't, was that Josh? I was interim pastor and y'all came in there to listen to him when your committee was working on, on that one. So, we, we crossed paths lots of times and ways back through the years and, and it's been good. And we certainly, uh, remember heart and the church here fondly. And as I said, it's, it's just a real comfortable place to, to be. And I'm glad that, uh, you're here. Uh, you know, some people watched the weather forecast last night and decided then they might not get up this morning and, you know, get out. And, uh, I, I was a pastor for twenty years before I went to Whalen, so I know how that works. I know how it works when some of them decide, you know, well, not gonna get up and go this morning. So, we're here and we're gonna study together and it's gonna be a good time. We're, uh, looking this year for the Winter Bible Study for all of our Baptist churches, our Southern Baptist churches at First Peter. And First Peter is a very timely book for us because First Peter was written to people who had come under persecution. And for the first time, many of them as Christians were beginning to feel that, you know, the world is turning against us. The world is becoming, you know, a hostile place, certainly not a friendly place for Christians. And, um, we'll talk a little bit about that in just a minute, about the situation of persecution for the early church in the, in the first century back there of the church. But the timeliness of this book is because this is a feeling that's growing, uh, in our world, that, that our world is not friendly toward Christians. And we read about the persecution that's going on in other parts of the world. And in some parts of the world, Christians are meeting this morning, but they're meeting in a situation where any moment somebody could burst through that door and put an end to it. And some of them might be hauled off to jail and some of them would be, uh, even killed. I hear people in the U.S., Christian people in the U.S., talk about, well, we're being persecuted. And they look at things that happen in our society, you know, with some of the problems that we have and the challenges that we have in our country. And they characterize that as persecution, but that really, when you see what's going on in the Middle East, over there in some of those countries, and when you see what's going on in other parts of the world, it's an insult for us to claim that we're being persecuted because we don't have any fear that anybody's coming through that door to arrest us. Now, there are a lot of people in this country who don't like Christians. That's about as obvious as it can be. Read the, the, the news reports, if you watch, uh, things on, uh, social media, if you're into the Facebook and all that, or if you just watch TV, it's obvious there are a lot of people in this country who don't like Christians. But the fact is, we're a long way from what's going on in other parts of the world. But the timeliness of this book is that people who have now suddenly come under real persecution, people who feel the world is not the friendly place for Christian faith that it used to be, people in our society who know that things have changed from when, you know, we were kids, for example. Things have changed dramatically in our society in relation to any religion, but it seems in particular to Christian faith. This is a book that speaks to that kind of time. What do you do in a world that is no longer friendly? What do you do in a world that is, in their case, turned hostile? What do you do when it seems like being a Christian is suddenly a problem for many people in our society? Well, that's, that's a lot of what this book is about. Now, on your sheet that I, that I gave you, there's a little bit of background up there at the top. The first two verses of this sound like a lot of our New Testament letters, whether from Paul or Peter or whomever. Uh, in a letter at that time, you identify who's writing it right up front. Peter, an apostle of Jesus Christ. Uh, what do we know about Peter? We know a lot about him, though. He's one of the most prominent men in the New Testament, certainly in the Gospels. The early part of Acts, uh, the story is a lot about Peter. We know that Jesus had called him from his fishing business in the, uh, on the Sea of Galilee. And Peter became, uh, the leader of the twelve, or at least he's the one that was willing to speak out more and sometimes not speaking, uh, very carefully. But, uh, Peter emerged as one of the dominant leaders or one of the most important ones among the twelve disciples of Jesus. And then when you transition from the Gospels into the Book of Acts, in the early church, he is the leader unquestioned. He and John are the leaders of the movement. And so much of the early chapters of Acts is about Peter and things that he did as, as leader of the church. So, we know that we're dealing with someone who's very, very important, very prominent, and someone who at the end of his life was in Rome and was working among the Christians there and became, uh, the leader of that church. Now, you also know from your New Testament study that Acts switches about halfway through. All the attention shifts to Paul as a missionary preacher and teacher, uh, sent by God out to the Gentiles, to the non-Jewish world, to spread the gospel there. Uh, the gospel was for everybody, not just for Jews. And they, the early church had to learn that lesson. Peter had to learn that lesson, that it's for everybody. It's not for any particular group of people. And, uh, so the Book of Acts shifts and Paul is out there going everywhere, all over the world, including, uh, finally to Rome, and taking the gospel all of those places. And then you turn the last page of Acts and you're starting into these letters that Paul wrote to various churches and individuals. So, you go along way in the New Testament when you think, well, the story has become all about Paul. But you get over to these letters like James, the one right before this one, and Peter, and, uh, the little letters of John, and then the Book of Revelation written by John. And then you realize that all of these fellows were out there doing, uh, Christian missionary, uh, work and establishing churches and building churches. So, Peter is, is the one whose name is on it. Some people think maybe his disciples actually wrote it. You see there a reference, I, I just wrote Gospel of Mark. We know that at the end of Peter's life there, into the sixties A.D., that Mark, young man who we first met in the Book of Acts, and he had a few problems early on, but by the time we get to the sixties here with Peter and Paul, Mark is acknowledged to be a very important worker and leader among the churches. He's an assistant to Peter and Paul in the work that they're doing. And they trust him and they have a lot of confidence in him when he gets older, which is a story in itself, that, you know, he had some initial failures, but he grows into a strong leader in the church. And, uh, the Gospel of Mark, according to our Christian tradition in those early sources, i- is what Mark wrote down, that Peter was preaching and teaching there in Rome toward the end of his life. So, when you're reading the Gospel of Mark, what you're really reading is what Peter was saying about Jesus and his life and his ministry and what he was proclaiming about Jesus. So, it could have been that, that these are things Peter was teaching i- in the church there in Rome and someone else actually wrote it down, put Peter's name on it because it came from him. Either way, it's not a problem because we know ultimately all of this scripture comes from God. It's delivered from God through a human writer, a human agent, who writes it, uh, as God has inspired that person to do. Second thing there in those first two verses, "to the exiles of the dispersion." Now, dispersion refers to God's people scattered throughout the world. There was a, uh, Jewish dispersion that took place over the centuries of their existence, where they came to be scattered over all parts of, of the world. There was a Christian dispersion from the early church in Jerusalem. When they came to be persecuted by the Jews, the Christians scattered out. And that was really the beginning of the spread of Christianity, almost, you might say, coincidental because it happened because Christians had to flee Jerusalem to escape the persecution that was coming on them from the Jews. So, this scattering of God's people, he refers to. Now, there's something interesting that happens here, though, with the, uh, situation that Peter is in. In this letter, he refers over toward the end of the letter, he refers to being in Babylon. Well, Babylon was one of those ancient cities way over to the east in what we would know today as the nation of Iraq. Well, that's way far east from Rome and from the places he mentions here in, in these verses. But, uh, I got a handy little tool. Our slide kinda got compressed because it's not on the same operating system as... But these, this is what we know today as Turkey, the nation of Turkey. You know from your maps of, uh, Bible times, this was a, a very important area in the Roman Empire. Here is Rome over here in what we know as Italy today, Rome. And this would be Greece. Some of you've been over there, maybe toured some of those areas down here is Jerusalem and the area where Jesus' life and ministry took place. Now, in those verses, you see some places listed. Paul says, "to, uh, the exiles of the dispersion in Pontus, Galatia," and he goes on. Those are all places right here in what we know today as Turkey. You can visualize that from your world of, uh, geography. Now, these are a long way from Rome where Peter was, but there's something that we think is happening here. Most scholars across the board seem to feel like. Peter was in Rome. We know that through the end of his life. His life ended, uh, when he was executed during the persecution that the Emperor Nero did against Christians. And yet, he says, he is sending this from Babylon. Well, of course, Babylon is over here somewhere, way east of everything we're talking about. Most scholars think that Peter was using some sort of code words because at the time of writing, this terrible persecution has broken out in Rome and, and in the region around Rome over in Italy. And that persecution was very intense. And Christians were being hunted down, jailed, tortured, killed, uh, imprisoned for sure. And to try to shield them maybe, or to conceal what was the, the true origin of this letter and the people to whom it was really written, he uses these references to places in often distant areas of the Roman Empire. And he uses Babylon as sort of a code word for Rome, the great capital of the whole empire. Babylon, of course, in ancient times was the center of, with great empires over in the east. And that, and by saying this is going to these regions that are way out here, he can conceal the fact that it's actually going to these Christians here who are the ones under this terrible persecution. Uh, you know, there's no way that we can absolutely positively verify that, but that is, in fact, uh, the belief of many, many scholars, that, that he's using these terms. At the ti- first century, Babylon, really the city of, ancient city of Babylon didn't exist anymore. I mean, there was a site there and there was a place where you knew the city was, but because, uh, there'd been many times when it had been captured by different invading armies and destroyed and so forth, the ancient city of Babylon wasn't there anymore. There was a city very close nearby that was still functioning, but not, not the ancient city of Babylon. So, anyway, uh, if that be true, it, it does show us that there was, in fact, a very real persecution that was having a very, um, devastating effect on the early Christians in, uh, in Rome. Uh, so you see, uh, on that again, these Christians who are suffering under persecution. The date of, of Peter's writing would have been sometime in the mid-sixties. That's when the persecution that Nero brought about was taking place. And most likely, this would have been sixty-four or sixty-five A.D. when this was being written. If you, you remember a little world history, maybe, that's a long way back there, isn't it, studying? When you studied world history in high school or somewhere, or maybe did a little in college, you know? But, uh, Nero was emperor, uh, and there was a great fire that burned most of the city of Rome. But the parts of the city that it burned were the parts that were sort of problem areas. You know, today in our big, major cities, there are these areas, we sometimes call them depressed areas, where there's poverty and high crime and that kind of thing. Well, the city of Rome was similar. There were the really nice parts and there were the not-so-nice parts of the city. To the people, it just seemed like the parts that burned were the parts that Nero wanted to get rid of, you know? So, it was almost like it was planned. It looked like it to them, anyway. And so Nero got the blame initially. He was the one everybody turned on and blamed because they thought he had had these fires intentionally set to rid himself of these problem areas of the city. And so Nero needed somebody to deflect the blame for the fire. And he found an easy target in this new movement called Christians. And they were new and they were different. They were strange to many of the people of Rome, and so they were an easy target to blame, you know? Easy to, easy to blame people that we don't know very well or to ascribe to them some qualities or whatever. And so Nero successfully convinced the people that it was this new group called Christians. They were anti-Roman anyway. They didn't worship the Roman gods. They didn't participate in all the Roman activities, the social activities. They didn't go to the, to the games, you know, where that they would stage in the Colosseum. They didn't do any of that. So, they were anti-Roman people, anti-social, you know, anti-Roman religion. And, and so they were the ones that were the easy target to say, it was those people. And as a result of that, there was a great persecution that broke out against these Christians. And this is the first time, really, that you see things like Christians being, uh, imprisoned, tortured, killed, and executed. You see Christians, you know, being thrown into the arenas with the, the wild animals to be attacked and devoured or with gladiators to fight, you know, and to the death and those kind of things. First time that happens is during this, uh, period of, of time with Nero. Now, it was confined pretty much to the, to the region of Italy, to right Rome and right immediately around there. It didn't spread out across the empire. About, uh, thirty years later, twenty-five, thirty years later, that does happen under another Roman emperor by the name of Domitian. And, uh, I'm gonna walk this back here. I don't want you to be in the dark on what we're talking about. The Emperor Domitian, who comes along about twenty-five, thirty years later, under him, the persecution does become widespread. It becomes part of what's going on across the empire in lots of locations where Christians are being persecuted then. But here, it's confined mainly to Rome, which is why a lot of scholars think these names are codes for things that Peter is using to try to conceal where they really are and what, what, who he is really talking to. All right, now, the rest of our session, we're gonna try to do this first sec- section, which really is so important in understanding the whole book. Uh, chapter one, verses three through twelve. I choose a, I've chosen a word for each one of these sections, and this one is secure. Peter is reminding these early Christians that whatever happens in the world, whatever the situation is that prevails out there around us, we are secure in our relationship with God through Christ. Our salvation is secure. There is nothing that will happen to us that would take that away. There is nothing that, that Nero or any of these people can do to us that changes the security of our salvation in Christ. And so the focus, Peter says, in this world, a world that's turned against us, a world that has become hostile to us, we need to focus on the eternal salvation that we have in Christ in the face of these kinds of troubles, trials, and the persecution that's going on. So, let's work our way through these verses and, and see how he is speaking to them about the secure salvation that they have. Verse three, "blessed be the God and Father of our Lord Jesus Christ. By his great mercy, he has given us a new birth into a living hope through the resurrection of Jesus Christ from the dead." You see, point, the important point that I, I think is in that verse, "a living hope." This relationship that we have with God that gives us hope for whatever comes in the world is alive within us. It's a living presence of God in us by his Spirit. Christ is alive in us. We have a living hope through a living Savior. He says, "this is through the resurrection of Jesus Christ from the dead." He is alive. He is not dead. And our hope is in a living Savior who, who is now, you know, who, who died for us, but is now alive forevermore and is now made Lord of all by God. So, what we have, there was so much death around. Christians being put to death and, as they had never seen anything like this, simply because they're Christian. There's a lot of death all around. Many of them had lost family, friends. We have a living hope because we have a living Savior who is alive forever. And he goes on in verse four now. "This eternal salvation is ours, and the fullness of this salvation is not revealed until eternity, but it is something that is forever as contrasted, as we will see, as contrasted to the situation that we find ourselves in right now in the world." Verse four, "and into an inheritance that is imperishable, undefiled, and unfading, kept in heaven for you, who are being protected by the power of God through faith for a salvation ready to be revealed in the last time." You see in there how he focuses their attention, tries to, on, on the eternal nature of our salvation? That, in, in verse four, he has those, uh, this, words describing this salvation. Imperishable. It, it cannot perish. Our salvation, our relationship with God cannot be ended by anything anyone does. It doesn't perish, never. It is undefiled. It is just as pure and, and real and genuine as the day that we met Christ. What we have today is just as real as what we first received as newborn Christians. It is unfading. It doesn't fade with the passing of time. We've all got things that have faded, you know? Mainly things, maybe clothes or, uh, you know, if you got a pair, if you got, you got a window with a pair of curtains that are, where the sun hits it real strong, they're faded out, you know? Things in this world fade. They lose their newness. They lose their appearance. They, they just lose things that are important. Our salvation hasn't lost a thing over time, and it never will because it... Our salvation hasn't lost a thing over time, and it never will because it is eternal, continues on into the life to come into heaven. In fact, he says it's being kept in heaven. That is, whatever happens to us down here on earth doesn't affect the future we have in heaven, not a bit of it. It hasn't faded away in any sense. All right, so we've got this wonderful eternal salvation that is ours. Now, he says we are kept in this by the power of God. You know, as Baptists, a lot of people out there, we're known, one of the things we were known for, used to hear a lot of people talk about is this once saved, always saved thing. And you Baptists are so big on that. Well, yeah, we are. We are. And it says that we are being kept in this salvation by the power of God. And when people say, well, you believe once saved, always saved, what we really believe in is the security of each believer in their relationship with God because God guarantees that relationship. It doesn't depend on our being able to do everything right. If our salvation depended upon our ability to do everything right, just the way God expects it, we'd all lost that salvation a long time ago. And there are those, you know, who believe you can lose it. You can lose it, get it back, lose it, get it back, lose it, get it back. I had a wise old seminary professor who said, security of belief, or what popularly call once saved, always saved. He said, here's my picture of it. You ever go to the mall or you go to Walmart and there's a parent with a young child who's just as antsy as they can be? That kid is just trying their best to get loose and run off somewhere. Want to go see the toys or go see their friend who's over here in this part of the store, whatever? And they're just trying their best to get loose. But the parent knows, I can't let my child run loose. It would be dangerous in a mall in Lubbock to have a child get loose and run off. Who knows what might happen to them? So that parent is holding on to that child by the wrist, by the hand, by the collar or something. They've got a hold of that kid and what? They're not going to let go. I can't let go of them. They could get away and get into serious trouble. So I'm holding on to them. Now, that kid is pulling and trying to get loose and wants to get loose and run off and do their own thing. And that's the way we are a lot of times in our lives. We'd like to get loose and run off and do our own thing, but God will not let us go. He keeps hold of us when we would let go of him, when we would like to be free of him. He will not let go. This eternal salvation is secure by the power of God working in our lives. All right, now, so against those ideas, a living hope, a living Savior, an eternal salvation, what should be our perspective on these trials and troubles and tribulations that we are experiencing? Well, two things, Peter says, that you've got to keep in mind, that you've got to see about this persecution or this trouble. Verse six, in this, the fact that you have an eternal salvation kept by God, guaranteed by God, in this you rejoice, even if now for a little while you have had to suffer various trials. A little while, it's only going to last a little while. You see there, the nature of this persecution is that it's temporary. It's not going to last. Here, guys, follow along with us. In verse six, he says, this is a little while that we may have to suffer this trial. What's he setting that against? The persecution that you are under is real, it's intense. He's not belittling it at all, as we'll see over later in the letter. He calls it a fiery ordeal. This is a terrible time that we're experiencing as Christians, but it's temporary. What lasts? What's eternal? Our salvation in Christ. What is temporary? What's of this world, persecution that Nero can bring on us? Now, I'm not making a political statement about current situation. This happens under every administration we've ever had in our lifetimes. But if you don't like the president, what do you know? He's going to be out of office for one of these days. He's not going to be there forever. If you don't like the last one, good, we've got a new one now, and I may like him or I may like the last one and not this one or this one not the last. Hey, don't get too all up in the air and act like it's the end of the world. We change on a regular basis in this country. We change. Peter is saying, look, the conditions that prevail in this world are temporary. Who has the final say on all things? God alone determines the final outcome of everything. And he has gifted us through Christ, those of us who have trusted in him. He's gifted us with an eternal salvation that cannot be lost. All right, now, second thing he says about persecution trial, you've got to remember, is that there can be a purpose in this. Difficult experience, hard, hard experience of persecution, but there can be something come out of this that is beneficial, fruitful, productive in our lives. Now, this is when you're getting to a perspective of real faith, converting the situation into something that is positive. That's not easy to do, but that's what we're called upon to do. What does he say it does in these verses? Verse seven, so that the genuineness of your faith, being more precious than gold, that though perishable is tested by fire, may be found to result in praise and glory and honor when Jesus Christ is revealed. Three things in those verses, at least we can see. What does this time of trouble, trial, and persecution, what can it do? Produce in us genuine faith, a faith that's been tested, tried, a faith that hasn't been through something, maybe a faith that you don't really believe, that you don't really We have some very good friends in Plainview whose daughter committed suicide the night before her college graduation. She was going to graduate the next day, committed suicide the night before. As a parent, I can't think of anything worse. I mean, I just can't think of worse. But this couple have spoken about this many times since then, several years ago, and have spoken about the experience and about having to, you know, it is what it is. We've got to deal with it. And one thing that they have said consistently, they've spoken in churches, other groups, our faith is real. To go through that kind of fire, that kind of test, and come to know, to learn, our faith is real. It's real. See, one thing Peter says is this will show us, this will demonstrate, this will create in us real faith, a faith that has been tested and tried. Secondly, a faith, what do these things do? They transform and purify us. They make us more pure and genuine. Pass those back and all the way. We are purified, transformed. He refers to the refining process of gold. You refine precious metals through fire. You put them under such intense heat that the impurities are burned away and what's left is just a pure metal. This is the same kind of process, he says. We need to think of this as this kind of process. And third, it brings glory to God. We, it is, as we go through this and our faith is tested and our faith is made more pure, it results in glory and honor to God. There are great things that can happen, even in spite of the negative nature of what's happened. For a while, we're going to have to be under this kind of situation, but listen, it's temporary. And we're going to come through this, and we're going to come through it having learned, having grown, having developed in our faith and having testified to the greatness of God and his power and his presence in us. Right perspective on our trial starts with understanding the nature of our salvation, eternal, kept by the power of God. It continues in the perspective, it produces within us the right perspective on what's happening. Finally, the last verses, he says, in this, he has started out in verse six, in this you rejoice. In verse eight, he's going to come back and talk about some of those things that are, what does it mean to rejoice in the Lord in the face of trials and troubles? Being believers who rejoice in trials, that's true. What happens? We love Jesus supremely, above everything else. The great commandment Jesus gave, you are members to love the Lord your God, with all your heart, mind, soul, body, strength, whatever. One thing that Christians do who rejoice in face of trials is they love Jesus. That's what carries us and enables us to continue. We love Him. Secondly, we trust Him wholeheartedly, completely. Our trust, we learned now that we can trust Him. He's there for us through everything, through the most difficult days of our life. God is there. Focus more intently on salvation and not our situation. If you're going to be a person who rejoices even in the face of trial, your focus is on the salvation you have in Christ and not the situation that prevails around you. Our joy does not depend upon what's going on in the world. What happens in the world changes all the time. You go from everything great to everything bad, sometimes in the same day. So our joy doesn't depend on anything in our situation, whether good or bad. Our joy depends upon the relationship that we have in Christ, the eternal salvation that we have. Focus on our salvation, not on our situation. And finally, appreciate the gospel we have received. The last part of this chapter, not the last part, but the last part of this section, talks about how the salvation we have is the thing that God promised, the prophets talked about it, everybody was so excited, all through the centuries, looking forward to the coming of the Messiah, the coming of the Savior. Peter says, we're living in those days. The Savior has come. We are the recipients of these promises of God, that salvation is ours through Christ. We've received it. We've experienced it. What God's people looked forward to for centuries has happened in our lives. Appreciate where you are, Peter is saying. In the great plan of God, he has allowed you to experience his salvation through Jesus Christ. What a great privilege it is for us to know God through Christ, a great gift of God to us. Now, these ideas that you see in this first section here, these verses three through 12, chapter one, these ideas are going to keep coming up in the letter. They'll be in the background there, or he'll actually refer to some of these same ideas all the way through. As he's trying to help them deal with persecution and trial, trying to help them deal with the world that's turned against them and has become so hostile and such a bad place for this group of Christians. All right, we're going to take a little break here as we move toward worship. What time is worship? Ten thirty? Ten forty five? Ooh, we're almost right on it, aren't we? All right, good. Let's say a prayer. Father, we thank you for these verses and for what they tell us about our salvation, for what was true then in Christ is true today in Christ. We have received a great salvation that is ours, no matter what comes. And come what may, we belong to you, and we have a salvation that is eternal. For this, we thank you. We praise you in Jesus' name. Amen.